Three point nine, that means we have two point three million. Is discretionary to us. As to where it goes. So, we can keep that in mind now. Taking this around in a circle here again. Matt Eckertley, when he was here from Baker Tilling. He went through the financing aspects and how we set on that. And I have copies of that that I can run off for anybody that wants. That show, he ran it as a, if we would borrow, we would bond for fifteen million, sixty-five thousand. I don't know, sixty, fifty, fifteen million. And he also ran it for example of twenty-one million. So we could see what the cost would be of repayment and all that. We're, on each of those, we would have a down ourselves right now. We'll have a down, I don't, right now is the right term, we'll have, we'll have down payment on there of six million, two hundred twenty thousand dollars. Either way we go, that's what we have put up from all, from the funds. Now, if we would add from this.
ERP? From, from the.
Not from ERP, from the whole that's created in the general fund.
Right.
Loss revenue.
From the loss revenue.
Loss revenue.
If we would add two million, and that puts us up to eight million, we could have for down payment. Of course, it's the same for the county, the way I understand it, as it is for you or I. If you're gonna buy a house, the more you have for down payment, the less your payment's gonna be. That's, that's just the way it works. And that, it would make, it would make, it would soften the payment. Now, we have to be able to collect a hundred and twenty-five percent of the amount we're doing in payment. And we have to set that aside. So at the end of the term, we'll have, there'll be a big savings account left over, is what I understand. Am I right on that?
And it can be used for during the time that it's being accumulated.
Is it, the stick it goes, what can be used for?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of difference right there. Because, for example, they showed the, on the twenty-one million, well, let's use the more real surplus. Fifteen million borrowed, we put up six million. The. Estimated revenues remaining at the end of twenty forty, where they ran it. For the payments throughout that long, will be five million dollars. But if we could use that long, why, why then, that's, that's okay. You've got your own chart here. It's, it's, you know, I've made no question about it, I'm not a sixteen million dollar person. So, this is all a head of beauty to me. Anyway, it appears we're in good shape for building this jail.
So how's the meaning of teamwork on the payment?
We have, we have, it's same, payments are exactly the same. We, we have to do all the bonding, we have to put the down payment and everything, it's just merely, we are putting it over onto this company. For example, we would pick Envoy that was here, and I know that Envoy is right now doing the police station in Frankfurt.
And they're doing the OT down there?
They're doing the OT down there, yeah. So they're actually doing the building of that police station. And then when that's, within thirty days after the construction and everything's all closed out, they'll deed it over? Or it'll be transferred out of the deed of the charter?
Ownership doesn't change, the title to the, title to the property, the jail site will remain in Carroll County. The ownership of the building during the, the operation until the transfer is with the DOT. Then, after thirty days after the, after the sentence of the project, so forth, then it's transferred to the county.
Okay, now, I'm speaking from, speaking to several different architects, and one of the things they don't like about it, about the OT, many of them, is they would rather work with the end user than with this person between.
The building?
Yeah. This builder is a good way to say it. They ask, I ask.
Are we saving money though, because we wouldn't have to have a contract manager?
Well, yes.
That's what killed the last contract.
You don't have to have.
Because we was paying that gentleman more than what.
They are the construction manager. They are the.
So that's, that was what, five, almost six hundred thousand?
It was a lot of money, yeah.
Just for them to be.
Yeah.
The, the only thing, and I understand exactly what you're saying about the architect wanting to work with the end user. In my opinion, the DOT, Envoy, whomever we, we may end up using, are extremely experienced in things like that, whereas, I don't know, if they came to me, I wouldn't know if this change order was correct, or this change order is correct or shouldn't. And I kind of would venture to say, you three aren't construction managers. So they're working, yeah, I can see quite the architect, because they might slide this by or slide that by. And I think, oh, I can't remember his, his name, the gentleman that did the presentation.
Rick Erischay.
Yeah, Rick, with those, with utilizing someone professional, the chances of, of things sliding by them are going to be fewer. I know, I would think.
I agree.
I appreciate that.
I agree with that.
Probably very true. I, the sliding by, the sliding hand, the doing, cutting corners thing can be done everywhere. I mean, we're gonna have to watch for that ourselves, but we're, we're the ones that are.
Well, we just have to hire the people we think we can trust the best.
That's right, that's absolutely right, and.
And I will, I will add that Envoy is, is extremely busy in the Fishers, Carmel, Noblesville, Indianapolis area. And of course, they're doing the Frankfurt project too. I think they've come highly recommended. I'm not touting them per se, but I think they're, they've got a lot of experience in that, in that position.
I think they did the one in West Lafayette where it was like a hundred million dollars. Where they tore up the whole state street, built the whole thing down through there. So, okay.
So where are we at now?
Well, where are we at?
Moving forward.
With, that is the best question of all, and that's what, that's what I want to address.
I know we've changed several things on the plans, so we never really gave our current, our architect the.
Elevators.
Elevators, we never really told them, this is what we want. So, saying that they're dragging their feet compared to anybody else, it's not fair to them, because not only did we drag our feet, we can't tell them how to build it or what we want. We had a plan, we had it set, we couldn't afford it. So now we're basically starting over again, and we're still in contract with Elvottis.
Yes, that's true.
And what was the issue, did they have any issues with that?
I have.
I know you do.
I have a lot of issues with it.
But, you know, it took us a year to find the spot to build the jail. Then it took us seven, eight months just to find out if we wanted to do construction manager or the other. Then it took us another six or seven months to decide who we're gonna hire to build it. So, I mean, it's, it's not just one person's fault, I think it's everybody's fault. Between us, them, you know, communities, you know, they, they had their input, and we had a meeting on that. I mean, government is slower than us now.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, but it is.
Bruce, do you have a comment there on that?
I just wanna note that even though you say the project funding is at fifteen eight, you're still building a twenty million dollar jail. You do realize that.
Oh, off his numbers?
I mean, I don't want everyone to think that we're building a fifteen, sixteen million dollar jail.
Oh, no, it's gonna be twenty easily.
I, no, I don't agree with that. I think we can build a sixteen million dollar jail, yeah.
A couple of questions, I, I might, at this point, Steve, kind of co-tailing on your comments. Would it be appropriate to put together three or four, even five people to make certain that this continues, that the wheels continue to roll on getting this project moving along? Because it seems like, you know, you guys have been elevations, and then it comes back here, and, you know, there's four, five, or six months lag time in between the two, or even a year, whatever the case may be. Would it be advisable to put together, I don't wanna say like a steering committee, but somebody with their ears to the ground in keeping, okay, we've gotta, you know, we've gotta contact these people, see about this, we've gotta do this, we've gotta do this, and, you know, does that make any sense?
It does, and the person I'd say who needs, who do that, I mean, one person, doesn't need to share. He's got contact with everybody, he knows what he wants, he knows what he needs. And he'd have a couple of people with him on the board, be from the council or from us. And have him steer us in the right direction, because everything he's came to us and said has been true. It really has.
So you may have the sheriff, a commissioner, a council member, a community member, local attorneys. There's a small team to keep it moving, to keep meeting every other week, once a month, but something to keep it moving.
Well, the problem is that creates committee, and all of that work has to be done and opened with notification immediately, inter-armed.
You already tried that once, and it didn't work. Whatever they brought to you.
That's right.
It was mixed, and I'm not sure it was by you or the council, but whatever that committee brought forth, we didn't do it.
That was a jail study committee.
We did not do it.
And the only thing we did from the jail study committee was hire Elvottis, everything else got squished.
On the county estate.
On the county estate. I mean, like Scott said, you know, we wanted the person who was best qualified. We hired that person.
We thought, yeah.
And, and it was more than what the council wanted to spend, and that's, and that's fine, I understand that. The bottom dollar is what, but you're gonna get what you pay for.
Okay. It was very openly said to us and to Elvottis, sixteen and a half million dollars.
That's three years ago.
Huh?
Three years ago.
Okay.
If you, if you look at your numbers though, you have to take into account that county funds. So you're, you're getting, say, a ten thousand dollar loan, and you're knocking off your savings accounts that you have already. But if you add those back in, you're adding twenty million dollar jail. If you look online, under illustrative project funding, other county funds, you're looking at six million dollars. If you add six million and fifteen eight, you're adding twenty million dollars.
Okay, I'm glad she worked her head off. I, I am really tired of working with Elvottis. And I really think they have dropped the ball, missed the boat. They did not design, what you said, a Chevrolet. They didn't come up with a Chevrolet concept of it clear until November, when they said, we'll put a steel frame around, a steel building up around it. That's what we asked for in the first place. If they were to draw on what you asked for, the, you, in the first place, the council would have funded it, because they'd have been close to that sixteen and a half million. But they did not do it. And when we went to them, we now actually gone to them twice and said, scale it down, scale it back. We've got nothing scaled back the next time, the attitude was, come up with more money. And that is, that's not the way I buy something, I don't expect the county to buy something that way. I got to look at this thing, and I thought, we're never gonna get through this thing in a reasonable amount of money without a big change. And I, I just feel like that we're in the wrong spot, and we're building way too much building. And we're missing out on, we don't have a juvenile facility, which I picked up from you, that we have to have, the juvenile facility. And we have, we would be nice, very nice to have a work release center.
But those are all separate buildings, you can't put them all together.
No, they can, they have to be separate areas. So we can take the existing jail and completely remodel it inside. I'm not talking about using the old cells that don't have doors of work and all that stuff. Completely remodel it, and put in the juvenile on one part of it, and the work release on another. We have to have a work release door going out the back in parking lot. We have to have a juvenile entrance on the front that is separate from the other booking. We do not have to build a new kitchen facility, we, we wanna enlarge and do a better job on the ministry department. It can be made bigger. And we can put in this nice horseshoe thing here, we could come up with a total capacity of ninety this way. Or, in the books, I'd give you sixteen point three million.
So how many, how many work release beds are there out of the ninety? How many juvenile beds are there, because you're taking that away from the total capacity of the adults.
I'm taking, definitely take, your argument is good as far as taking away the juvenile from it.
And there, and there's no expansion in the future of fifteen years?
Yes, there is. The best way to expand it at that time would be to remove the old part and put a new part there.
But where do you go to?
And we don't have to.
Stage everything then, though, because you have a boss.
Oh, I know what you're saying, that's gonna be a problem. But we don't have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on running a water line, and we don't have the congestion of the darn corner out there where the unpackers go.
Well, that's because we have three lines soon, because that's the project that started. You've got two other ways to get out.
Okay, so an officer leaves the jail, and he gets down there, oh geez, there's so much. Now I gotta turn around and really come back and go a different way out. I, I don't like that at all, that doesn't.
So when you turn out here, go left, go north, you've got railroad tracks.
The railroad's bad.
But if, if he's up there and sees railroad tracks, you've got two ways to go around it.
And you got the school out there letting out. And during that time, nobody goes through out there. Uh, I don't know, I'm gonna work on it, I have to know. Huh?
Yeah. He's got lights on top of his car. He has lights on top of his car.
He has lights, I know, yeah.
I don't know, I think.
Okay, you got sixteen beds, sixty-six beds, six juvenile, eighteen work release. Those eighteen work release would come directly out of the main jail population.
That has to be separated from the main jail population.
It would be.
Because you don't have a chance to bring it in and contract it.
It would be, separate entrance, completely separate.
And for the juveniles, that has to be a totally separate building though.
No, it does not, it has to be, they can't, they cannot be.
Psychic sound.
Interwrenched, what?
Psychic sound, yeah.
Psychic sound.
Juveniles cannot have, as Ted puts it, psychic sound contact with adults.
And that will happen, and that'll be so. Because the smartest they are, you can rain the toilets and you can talk to anybody. It, it happens, you know, you'll have.
Rain the toilets.
I, I just.
It, it, it's an inner conversation. I know it sounds stupid, but.
I just wasn't expecting that. I'm just having a hard time, why were you even discussing this? So you're wanting to put sixteen million into a remodel?
And a big addition.
Where's the, I don't understand where you're addition, I thought when you did this years ago, that there was nowhere to go but up. Where are you additioning it?
The park lot, park on the east side.
That was studied back six, seven, eight years ago, and that was where they said.
You have all that property out there to where, looking into the future, I mean, this, that just doesn't make sense to me.
So, you don't, we go out there, we don't have a juvenile facility, right now.
In the future, you could.
We don't have it now, we're dealing with money we have right now.
Or if you do a redrawal of what you're wanting. I mean, I guess that was the purpose about there, was that there was add-on in the future, and there was more.
You do have add-on in there.
More land, more parking, more, I mean, up here it just seems so close bordered, and to put sixteen million in a remodel as to a new upgraded, updated building, I guess I don't, that's not what I would.
To me, to remodel this one down here, you have to tear down the old portion because of the sewer line. We just, we just had them re-lined, and that's not gonna last very long. By the time they start flushing stuff, and you run a jet system down through there, it's just gonna eat that fiberglass out of it.
You have no parking, you have no, I mean, the accessibility.
Parking available across the street, we could acquire it, or parking available to the southeast, we could acquire it.
So you're gonna buy, buy, buy when you already have your property sitting up there?
The property part of it is, the, the expense part of the property is nothing. That, I mean, that, we could go anywhere and buy property. The, the, the factor is the expense of running the water lines, the sewer lines, the.
You don't think you're gonna have two, three hundred thousand dollars in running, in, in buying property as compared to running.
What kind of properties? I don't know, I, I have heard over and over and over from everybody, we gotta have work release. There's no work release, you know, plan. They, we brought it up, I know I brought it up at least twice to Elvottis, and they just said, no, we're not gonna do it. That's all I got out of them, no, no release, work release. Almost exactly those words. And we have juvenile situation in this county now, where there's no place to take a juvenile, we have to just turn them loose. Cocoon is full, that's where we've always taken them. Have they loosened up some, Toad, have they?
Just, nothing to speak of, but yes, slightly.
Slightly, okay. By the way, I don't know if this is feasible, but I, I learned from Toad that it's like three hundred dollars a day for a juvenile that we pay to put them over there. We could put them in our own, and we're talking about amounts per day we're spending.
Yeah, but on juvenile, apparently it's responsible to pay that back in a certain amount of time, if you can get them to pay it. Then you have to.
Wonder what percentage, Toad, does anybody ever pay one of those back?
At least what I know, it's, it's very rare.
Yeah.
Well, we can also start charging inmates that are pre-trial, that is set in our jail, there's an option there in the future.
And I don't think that's a bad option.
I, I know when I picked up prisoners before, they walked out there with a debt of seventy-five dollars, because they was there for like three days, and twenty-five dollars a day. And they had so long to pay it before they got sued in court.
Aren't most of those guys getting caught so much anyway that it's just another day?
Sometimes, sometimes. But, I mean, with what you can go over here, we, we've got almost half a million dollars at least invested in everything we've done so far.
Got a new roof, we got, we did the plumbing.
No, no, not over there. And this project with Elvottis and trying to move forward out there.
Yeah, and what have you got out of it, that's my whole point. We haven't gotten zero out of Elvottis. We have no plan, we have, we have nothing. We've spent all this money on them. Huh?
We have a plan, we just took it forward.
Toad, have you talked to him on the new design on the new?
The only thing, when we talk about new design, is just the, the reduction in beds.
And we went from a hundred and twenty to what, a hundred and ten?
Four. Three or four, yeah, a hundred and four.
So once again, I'll bring up the, what happened to the eighty-five beds and putting in a work release?
Eighty-five beds and what?
And putting in a work release.
That could be done since they're redone.
Was that every, was that ever visited, and I'm sure if it, I'm sure you told Elvottis that, but I don't understand when you tell someone that you hired what you want, or what you want your cost from. You should be on them until you get that cost and get what you want.
The work release came up after we already had the design done. Then that's when it was brought to us, hey, what about work release? Well, we asked for it, but the plans were already done, they said, well, we can do this, and this, and this. And, and that's just where it stopped, before it came to you guys for funding.
I've heard numerous times, eighty-five beds and a work release, but I've never heard of one of you commissioners going to Elvottis and saying, that's what I want. Because I understand you can't work together, so one of you should be going and saying, this is what we want.
Well, actually, it's not, I mean, it is what we want, and it's gonna be our building, it's the needs of the sheriff. The sheriff needs to go back and say, hey, we've got new concerns. Because he's the one that says, this is what we need, and, so.
So talk to him.
So the question is, if Bill's not wanting, I might be speaking out there. You may not wanna stay with Elvottis because of the concerns you've had. Um, I thought they've done this wonderful so far, because like she just said, we can't make up our minds what that Sam hell we want.
Scott?
I was a little disappointed, I, I believe, as were you, Bill, at that Thursday meeting, when Greg was asked, how long will it take for you guys to come up with a new plan? And he stated that our last joint meeting was November. Some reason I thought it was previous to that, but.
I did too.
Anyway, he said November, and when he was asked how long it would take to get a new plan together, he stated probably August. And immediately I was disappointed, because I'm like, okay, that's been at least four months, and you've not done anything. You know, given our conversations that we had at our last joint meeting, they hadn't done anything to come up with a new idea or a new plan. I was disappointed with that, thinking, okay, here we are, we're gonna be darn near a whole year getting a new plan since our last joint meeting. So, yeah, I'm disappointed in.
I was kinda disappointed.
You know, if they want the job, I mean, I, I don't know, myself, if you want a job, you go out and, you know, you ask, you ask for the business. And then you follow up with it and say, okay, here, here's something that may be a little more palatable. I think we all are aware, we can pare it back, you know, to, you know, plywood walls almost, and it's still gonna cost eighteen and twenty dollars.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, costs have continued, that's what Bill and I heard Thursday, costs have continued to go up like two, three times. Well, maybe not the total cost, but somebody's.
So from here on out, we need to decide who, because if they haven't got the same design yet, is what I'm hearing.
Don't have anything designed.
I thought they'd just rung everything down and put it in a smaller building. But I guess, you know, I'm upset with that, because I thought they already had that going. But my other thing is too, is like, why wouldn't you design something when you don't know what they want? I mean, I mean, I, I look at it their point of view, I'm gonna waste all my manpower doing this, and turn it in, but we're gonna make changes again. So I think, you know, we need to go back to what you said, is put, put Toad in charge, and a couple of counsel, and the commissioner on this to design the jail, get that done, and get it to him ASAP. So they can get this design on what we want. Then they can bring it to us and say, hey, this is what we got, what do you think, to everybody. Then move forward from that.
Isn't that exactly what we already went through three years ago?
Exactly, but we are starting over.
They didn't, they didn't do it.
They designed it, we just.
But not while we told them.
We didn't tell them until after the fact that it was already done. And that's what I understand it.
Well, they presented twice, they presented twice.
And one of them had a work release area where they could take one of the base systems out and put a work.
And they came in, what, three or four million more?
Yeah, we was quoting, we thought we'd be sixteen, came in, what, eighteen, almost nineteen? When, when it came to you guys to fund it, that, that was designed with the.
Well, it's a joint meeting, it was almost twenty-one, I recall that, but.
The one that they designed for, what county was that we went to, the one?
Adams.
Huh?
Adams.
Adams County, yeah. That'll work really soon, I'm sure.
But when you add a work release center, that, that's more staff too. And that's something that, that, that they were concerned with, because you can't double. It, it's totally two different things to be there, when you work in corrections. It, it's totally different, when you're booking somebody in from the streets. When you're booking somebody in from the streets or you're putting somebody back in jail because he was out on work release. There's totally two different processes and it takes time to do.
Tracy?
And when we toured that jail, I remember distinctly asking this question. There is a lot of empty offices, there is a lot of empty space in this jail. Can you build this on a smaller version? And they said, yes.
But they didn't?
But they did not give that to you.
Basically, what they did is they pulled out the drawer and they got out that plan and they said, here you are, this is what you're gonna get. And it was too expensive and they said, too bad, come up with more money. I don't know, we're gonna have to, I guess, I've said probably too much.
I, I used to work for consultants.
Yeah?
Uh, the way they went through it is the commissioners would hire them. They would then come to whoever's being built for, so in this case, the sheriff. And they would go do a programming meeting with them, figure out exactly what they need. Then they would go back and then design, cost, come back to Toad and say, give, give them the figures, review it. And make any changes and then move on. But they had a one point of contact that they could get to on a monthly, at least a monthly basis. Then Toad can take the information to the council or the commissioners or whoever else.
Yeah.
But then, but then you've got it moving along instead of them designing the whole project and coming back with a final, this is your twenty million dollar project. One that probably shouldn't be to have been.
Well, all I can really, really put my arm around is I, I was part of a building, five or six houses down in Roscoe, New Orleans. And we just, we worked like crazy with the owners on trying to get everything right. And I can tell you that the day they moved into it, there was something they wished they'd changed. You know, every one of them, when they finally walked through the house, and oh, that should've been all. But anyway, uh, you, the diligence of working, of designer, working with the customer, has existed, this relationship.
Well, I have a question. Has, has the needs changed in the past few years when this originally started?
The needs of the jail?
Yeah, needs of the county, of the county. Because we have more juvenile now than we did, what, six years ago or so.
Juvenile, the other thing that comes to mind, Lauren, is, uh, obviously, I think when we started this whole idea of, um, community corrections wasn't even on board for the county. So that's a, obviously, a dual program that's, that's involved now. So, um, yeah, so it's-
So that takes people out of the jail, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's supposed to.
So we have even more of a problem if we didn't have community corrections, right?
Right.
What to say is, the ones that goes through these work release programs, community corrections, they violate before they go back to you. Not a hundred percent, but I'd say about eighty-five to ninety percent.
Tracy?
Who has said we need a work release program?
What?
Who has said we need a work release program?
Right of the law.
So what, I've heard from, I guess, Toad, that there, we don't, we can't house enough people in the work release program to, to have it worthwhile. Is that not correct? Has that changed, Toad?
It's been a while since I've researched the numbers, but, um, they, it's not gonna be the cash cow, if you will, that we might anticipate. I mean, our numbers aren't going to, um, and I guess the example I'll share is almost comparable to us. Um, when we were potentially looking at, I spoke with, um, Sheriff, Fulton County Sheriff Chris Sailors. He has work release that operates out of their jail. He's allocated funding, if I remember correctly, allocated funding for twenty, twenty-five individuals within that program. At the time I spoke with him, uh, again, it's been some time ago, he only had eight actively participating.
Eight?
Yeah.
And it still comes from the courts if they qualify to do work release. That's all up to the judges if they're gonna give them work release. And on top of work release, you gotta have somebody to go and check on them to make sure they're at their job at these periods of time.
Toad, what's the overlap between community corrections and work releases? Are they two completely different programs or is there some overlap between the two?
From what I know of the business, the, the two words are, have been interchangeable, although they are two separate programs.
Some county runs around, but I mean, the sheriff's county.
Right.
It's kind of high country.
So with you writing community corrections, do you see a work release program working in our?
I think we need to have some serious research done into that because it is very expensive. I, I, I'm a theory, it sounds like a great idea.
But then you gotta also look at the people that are getting put on work release are out of county. So they get put on their work release in their county and their county takes over that. Cause just like probation, if you're in Howard County, you get caught, you can transfer your probation to over there. And that's revenue that's lost. And that happens a lot.
Do we, Toad, do we have anybody on work release that have been sentenced from our courts in another county?
That's happened before.
Do we?
We used to get a lot from White County, White-
That right?
Yep.
That was a thought, it never occurred to me.
Right.
I mean, work release is there, that's like Tracy said, why, put sixteen, it's gonna be twenty here. Put it out there, then you get the, the room to expand it without taking beds away in the future. Cause really, I mean, I think when I worked there, fourteen and a half years, I think we had a total of maybe nine, ten people that did work release. But when they went to work release, they violated and they was right back within three, four weeks because they went out of their boundary line. That same thing with your house arrests. House arrests is wonderful, but they, they violated.
So maybe get the jail built itself and then as Callie said, do a comprehensive study on how would we have used work release, say, in the past five years? Is it really necessary? And then that's one of your add-ons that you can add on if you have the room to do an add-on.
It'd be nice to build a building right out there next to them, put a fence going right over to Indiana Packers and tell them they have to work at Packers. Make a deal with Packers, they're working, they just walk back and forth. That'd be an ideal situation.
Well, and, and that raises, well, I, I guess, two questions. Number one is, have we been presenting anything from Kelly Good? For, you know, people to look at? And number two, what, couldn't we still, I understand it's gonna require, you know, half again more manpower. But couldn't we utilize the old facility for a work release center?
It could do.
We're up here away from the jail?
Yeah.
Sure.
Or even a juvenile there.
We've gotta use that building. It's still, maybe it's not what we exactly need for a jail facility, but it's still an okay building, maybe with a few, you know, improvements here and there.
Everything, you have to have a shell weapon.
But it doesn't have to be absolutely secure for one to do. All right, I understand the labor concept of it, but-
Yeah, I agree, walk through there and get it and settle it for either a juvenile facility or a work release.
I'm not nearly as keen on work release as I am on juvenile.
I think the need is higher on juvenile.
Work release because I've heard of work release, group release, work release. And so I'm going, well, if that's what people want, we oughta be trying to get it.
Work release would be way cheaper because when you're in a juvenile facility, you still gotta have a teacher come in and do their classes. But I, I think there's a whole different set of rules for that.
I, I'm sure there is, yes.
We need a jail.
We need a-
We need a jail. And I'm seeing before me three people that cannot decide on what kind of jail we need. So let's build a jail, let's get that fixed before you try to start deciding on two or three other situations.
We had a jail built, but we just couldn't afford it.
This jail is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in storing inmates out of county. That's all money that we would not be spending and I'm with Bill, I'm, I'm like, if you're not happy with Elvatos, then get rid of them. And let's get somebody that will do what you want them to do. One of you take charge of the project. I know you can't all work together on it, but one of you take this under your wing and get this done.
I guess Tracy, that, I don't know about the one taking charge of it, because I, I would, if I were, you know, since I sit in the middle, I, I wouldn't wanna take away from their powers.
I'm not saying that, but one of you take charge of it and bring back to your commissioner meetings.
Kinda like I did with the meeting.
Yes, exactly, yeah, perfect.
Well, I always thought Toad was our middleman because it's basically, it's his building, we just-
The only problem I have with that is just absolutely no disrespect to him, he's not gonna be here with us for a week.
But he's still around.
Maybe he'll be back.
But the consultant needs a point of contact at the county that he can talk to on a weekly, monthly basis.
I think our commissioner is our consultant.
That's not happening with the commissioners.
No.
I think our commissioner is our consultant. I don't think we need to hire someone else. I mean, they are more than capable of working with our sheriff and to build a jail.
Either way, we're still gonna have to go back and talk to him because we can put something in there that's not acceptable or he sees something different than we see. I prefer my sheriff to be the point of contact. He, he's involved with designing it. Come back to us and we approve it or not approve it. And if we approve it, we move it on to you guys for the funding.
And then in your way, we start all over, get on out.
Even, even if we switch, we're gonna be, if we switch, we're gonna be in a lawsuit with Elvatos if we're in a contract. We'll have to bite them out.
Huntington bought them out.
But I don't know-
They bought a jail in Huntington and they said, no, and let them go.
How much longer is that contract now?
I don't know, I was wanting to get a copy off of that and I didn't get in here early enough this morning to ask her.
Do you know Ted?
I don't, I haven't looked at it. I've got it, I've got it on my computer.
Jude, it might be a lapse.
There, we're still under contract until we terminate the contract. I'm not sure their termination clause. It's probably four, I don't know. And there may not, this may not be great, greater than that, I don't know. I haven't been directed to look for termination. I'm waiting for direction from two more.
Steve, you're worried about how much we've already paid them, but to me, it's already going down the rabbit hole. How much more are we gonna pay them and get nothing? That's what I'm worried about.
But they stood behind us through all the conflicts we went through. A hundred percent, they stood there waiting on us to give them the stuff.
If you were getting paid the amount of money they got paid, you'd stand right there with them too.
I think that would be with anyone, you know.
Be what?
That would be with anybody, any of them.
Sure. Well, I don't know if we got anywhere today. I certainly appreciate you letting, and you letting me express my opinions of it.
So we still need to move forward from here because it might, we just delay it another thirty days.
Oh, there is?
We need to make a decision.
We can, they're not gonna do anything on it, they're not gonna get anything done clear until September or October.
But if you even change architects, it would still probably be in September.
It's gonna be September, yeah. For brand new, we're done.
Can you just say, we want something by April eighteenth?
They have, uh, there was no, there were no decisions made in these meetings Thursday. Elvatos has been given no direction.
No direction as to what to, what to do.
You have to give them a plan.
Exactly.
They have not been given any direction.
Now, they don't, they can't do what we, what Leslie wanted to do, they don't afford it.
No, only way we could've given more direction is if we had taken their plan and said, okay, we wanna take that off and 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 done it for them.
I don't think we gave them the direction in, in November either. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything where we directed them to do anything other than it was represented. And here's what it costs and the cost estimated because of costs were estimated. We knew, uh, from, from people before we did, uh, the process. So I, I don't think there's anything where they've done any direction, uh, since, since releases. For them, it's really been up, up in the air.
Yeah, ever since, since the plan we submitted was denied because of funding.
Correct.
We never did, you know, we just said, hey, we need scale backup, we never did say-
We need to take five million dollars off of them.
That, that's where they should be working with a person from here and, and working that through and then that person go back to the commissioners with what was decided.
And I'm sorry, but I don't think you dump that on your sheriff.